The Creator of all of us and you are Lord God, the source of blessing, you're the source of strength that we need every day. We thank you oh God for this beautiful morning which you have given to us. And we thank you because we could continue to learn a lesson that will benefit Lord each one of us. As we go on, we invoke your holy presence to be with us and bless us Lord with your wisdom to enable us to comprehend oh God the lessons today. We pray also for the others who may catch up oh God, uh you may hasten their footsteps oh Lord so that they could also catch up oh God the lesson that we have this morning. We entrust to you the whole duration of this meeting oh God in Jesus' name, amen. Okay, so uh we're not advanced now but we'll come back to next no, so we'll see if we can see it later, I guess it's Lesson 8, but we're advanced now to 12, we'll come back to the next one. But we're going to talk about God's perspective on every family. So we know that the plan for our family, the plan for us now, is God's plan, it's an invention, it's an discovery, but it is God's plan. Morning sir. So, when we plan for God, he has ordered this. So, uh if you want to know about us now or family, then follow this, the protocols, the protocols for a happy marriage and a happy family. As you see, it's a beautiful word. You can see, there are instructions here about a happy marriage and a happy fa- family. Okay, one quote that is spoken, "Families are the compass that guide us. They are the inspiration to reach great heights and comfort when we occasionally falter." It's written, no? It's written that our family is by the compass that guides us. Or it's an inspiration for the growth of these high levels or something like that, height, ambition, uh, dreams to live. And then it's comforting when occasionally we fall. No, for these things, our family, if you come tomorrow, it's our refuge and our fortress. Okay, this morning let's talk about the components of a godly family. The components, it's about the components, the substance of a godly family, or what is called a godly family. Okay, so number one, I'm going to say it again, the marital role of, of, uh I'm sorry, uh, I don't know if I can, it relates to Lesson 11, I'm going to do another module, sorry. Lesson 11. So, one quote that is spoken, "My greatest treasure is my family. I am not perfect, but I love them with all my heart." Let me see, Lesson 11? Okay, it's over. Okay, part two. This one is about the components of a godly family. Part one, first spiritual role of a father. The spiritual role, it's about the part of the father who has to give, no, to make it godly, our family. First, it's a goal for the family to make it godly. As you know, uh it's one of the things that is mentioned in the DWD. Right? DWD, it's a shelter for veterans when these children are in conflict, having problems here. It's a ministry, talking about problems in the family. Trouble, right? Whatever, what's the problem, whatever, it's a family. No, when you're disintegrated, you're a family. So, what's the role of the father? First, he is to act as a priest. The role of the priest, he is to act as a priest. Like a priest who is in the house, like a priest who is in the house of worship. A priest, it's a family, automatically the father is the master. What's about a priest? A priest is in charge of the spiritual body, it's a family. First, what's the word for priest? What's about the term, what's about a priest? Uh, what's about Islam, a priest? If you come tomorrow, if you come tomorrow, a priest, if you come tomorrow. Okay. The father, he has to act as a priest, a family, it's about he is in charge of the spiritual body of the family. If you want to be godly, your family. In the Old Testament, in the Bible, in the Old Testament, a priest was to mediate between God and the people. First, what's the role of the priest? He has to mediate, meditate. No? He is, he is to exalt God, in behalf of God. Or to present to God, in behalf of God. First, the priest, important, right? He has to meditate. He has to exalt, exalt God, in behalf of God. Or who is to exalt to God, in behalf of God? It's just the role of the priest. Then, when the father, or what is the priest, he is to act as a priest, then in charge of the spiritual body. It's about the father, he has to go to bed. Or when he pray before meal, or when he pray before going to bed. He has to go to bed. It's not for other people, it's not for the teacher, they just sit up. But the father is first, the parents. Role, it's written, early in the morning, he wakes up, he gives thanks, gives thanks to his wife, gives thanks to his son, gives thanks to his child. God bless my son, his work, bless my son, his school. Bless God, God fulfills my role as a priest. He is to give thanks to God. When he his actions, when he does, he presents to God, to his children, to his children. Okay, so so, a father as a priest is in charge concerning spiritual things in the family. He is to present and intercede for his family before God for safekeeping and blessing. And, what's more, he is to present God to his family, to be thanked for, to be praised and worshipped, and to fear, love, and revere. He presents to his family, to God. Or what is said, he presents to his family. Okay, now he presents to his family, it's God, it's God. For the sake of God, to be blessed, or to be worshiped, or to be blessed, or to be praised. So, the master is to act. Imagine if you give thanks, what a good family it would be. It's a good thing, right? Okay, as a priest. He is to train his children. First, it's one of the roles, father, it's a training. It's about his profession, it's a training, it's a discipline. We're going to read from Proverbs 22 verse 6. "Train up a child in the way he should go; when he is old, he will not depart from it." So, what's the role of the parent responsibility, especially the father? Whatever, whether he is trained, whether he is disciplined with his children, or what is said, it's shaped his character with his children, to the sake of God. When he brings up them, it's at the end of God. Okay, so if you give thanks, the role of a priest, to train them, no, godly family, it's a good thing, to give thanks to God, no, to the family, tomorrow, it's the desire, no, it's a godly family. So, what's the role of the father, it's just the role, right? Okay, Ephesians 6:4, a father is a trainer and instructor to his children. No, the master is a trainer and instructor to his children. To help with their upbringing, to help with the worship of God, to help with God. And, no, to help. Okay, the father, tomorrow, tomorrow, the father is evangelist, he has to disciple his children. Like an evangelist, he has to go to the church, like a church. But you, as a father, in a simple way, give them evangelism to your children. It's about you, first, introduce him to Christ, to God, to God. It's not for other people. You, yourself, first, you have to introduce your children to God. He is a God, he is a God. Right? So, he is evangelist, he is a pastor. No, his children, to God, to be praised, to be blessed. Or he is a disciple, a disciple. It's about, child, uh, who is Jesus, who is Jesus, who is Jesus. If you give thanks, child, worship every Sunday, and worship every Sunday. First, he gives thanks, a disciple. No, if your child is aware of God, no, if he is aware of God, then he is away from the bodies, from the what, what is it called? The evil ways, the evil ways, it's hard for him. Okay. So, what's the role of the father? Let us see, he is to clearly present God, the Father's image, to his children through his life. So, the master, he is the one who is giving thanks, he is the one who is giving thanks. He is giving thanks to his children. He presents to his child, the gift of God. So, what's when, when, when the master, he is giving thanks to the child, he is giving thanks, or the concept of God, to his child, to his child. Ah, the God, it's a blessing, he is giving thanks, he is giving thanks. But the master, he is giving thanks, giving thanks, to his love, he is giving thanks to his child, he is, he is formidable, for the children, that God is giving thanks, giving thanks. Oh, what's the role of the master? He presents to God, the gift of God, to his children, he is the actual act of giving thanks. Okay, so spiritual role of a father. Second, of course, domestic role of a father. Letter A, he is the provider. So, the master, the provider, he is, he is the one who gives thanks, Genesis 3:19, "By the sweat of your bro, you will eat your food." It's a God, it's a God. When Adam died in the sinner's house, he ate it, he ate it in the garden of Eden. No, he didn't go to the church, he didn't go to the church, he was a child. But he was wrong, then he closed the garden of Eden. So, after that, he was told to work, to work, so to work, the one, the one, the father, the father, he was working. Okay, so he was told, the father, the provider, he was told to give thanks for giving thanks to his family, to give thanks, to give thanks, to give thanks, to give thanks. No, for the sake of giving thanks to his family. Okay, it's about, uh, working. A father is to ask God to bless his sources for living, so he can provide for his family the following. What's the basic, the basic, food, clothes, shelter, and education. So first, the one, the one, the one, the one, the one, the one, no, he doesn't have to give thanks for his work. What's the reason? He goes to his father, he goes to his mother, or he goes to his father, right? When, I read in the Bible, when when you are a man, you give thanks to your family origin, to your father or mother, give thanks to them, whatever, give thanks to your family of procreation. So, he has to give thanks, he is a child. But, the problem in the Philippines, ties to, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not, or or it's not, it's extended, or a quarter of this, because, it's a hundred, it's a hundred. Is that right? The problem, oh God, oh, what's the advantages, when the child is born, is born, he is a child, or he is a child. What's the advantages? It's a good one. Right? If you're poor, you don't have a problem, if you're rich, your mother, right? You're giving thanks, it's a good one, a good one. You're giving thanks, okay, right? Okay, right? Or what's the advantage, if you have your child, the first, a baby. Hey, you're a father, you're a father, volunteer for your father, you're a father, you're a father, you're a father, okay, right? First, advantage, if you're born. What's the disadvantages, what's the difference, if you're born? A child, he's not born, he's not born, he's not born, he's not born, whatever, it's a depravity of sin.
And be united to his wife. Mauginikuman kay para ma-implement ang parenta responsibility o ma-balance gining health attention between freedoms at cha- child, children's freedom and responsibility. Okay? Let his children enjoy their freedom to play, but teach them at the same time how to be responsible Christian or good citizen. Dapat nga nagyud. A father is, is responsible to orchestrate the affairs of his family towards godliness. So ang papa yun mo oy mag-orchestrate. Siya gawin mag-lead sa mga affair sa iyang pamilya ngayon sa pagkabalaan. So dapat ang amahan yun mo oy may ingong a anak. Pag dalik mo kay dumingguron manimbata, mamukaw siya sa'yo sa puntag. Okay, matana ta kay nga naman ah manimbata. Dapat amahan yun mo oy mamukaw anak. Ang father gawin dapat muuhi mo anak. Kunhi mo na siya sa father, no? Ang father mo ay mamukaw sa iyang pamilya asawag anak. Matana mo kay manimbata. Pagka-nindot nga ikchina sa balay, lin-dutang ikchina sa balay, no? Ang, ang maot nga ikchina kung sa man. Kung anak pa mo oy mamukaw sa papa kay wakamatla kay nahubog ngang gabi eh. Mani maot nga ikchina sa balay eh. Na hangover, kay nadaut sa, sa badunay. Ah mani maot kayo, di ba? Og maunidaghan podkarun mga panahon na. And so, maudi ay nga grabe ang kaso sa mga vouse karun tungkol sa this integrated family. Mo'y nakuku kayong problema sa government. Itresap ni mo, no? Ka na mga broken families. Itresap kay ge-burnstorming manamula dito sa una, dito sa seminar. Ngayon nga namang pamilya, nga nung nga namang, nga nung man. Abi ang problema, spiritual bankruptcy. Ang papa og mama murao, katunggi punyagan na sila nakasulat og simbahan. Ikaduha, no? Katunggi kasal sila. Ya kay galipin pa man pa makasal. Ay sa ragdun katulad yung gi punyagan, mo rey gi tawon. Ya kasi may expect ni mo. Kasi may expect ni mo, good morning ma'am, look. Kasi may expect ni mo nga spirituality, no? Sa mga, sa pamilya. Kayo ang papa og mama experience wala. Mauna nga kakadaghan ang problema. So that is why, no kita, ngayon sa mga anak. Ah kita mismo, ngayon na pay, nga na ay pamilya. Mga bataan unpa, himoon yun na to, no? Ang atong role. As a father, act as a priest, no? And then, a good provider, no? And ma-implement kedyang ang kaning tawag na pag-bring up sa kabataan in the way of the Lord. Okay? Then ang ginoo mamalipay sa pamilya. Maugin niya ang perspective sa ginoo, no? Sa matag pamilya nga magiging godly. Hinaut nga isa sa mga goal na to sa kinabuhay. Atong family, marriage and family nga magiging pleasing in the sight of God. Nagglorifying nga sa'ya. Okay, so deryalang koto, mga atong lesson hinaut nga donatay mga nalearn, no? Ng mga mayung butang labina sa ato ang family. Let's pray. Thank you, O God, for the lesson we have learned today. Thank you for teaching us, O God. Based on your word, how to have a good and happy marriage and a happy family, especially godly family, O God. We know, O Lord, that nowadays, ah there's so many problems that ah devastates, O God, the families, O Lord. But since you are the one who ordained marriage and family, help us, O God, to establish our family. Help us to make our goal, our family, Lord, to glorify your name. This is our prayer, O God. And we pray also, Lord, once again, as your people today, the legislators will have their session. We pray for divine wisdom to be upon each one of them. Help them decide, O God, those important matters to decide for the continuous progress of our municipality in Ipe. Continue to bless us and to preserve all of us, the LGE family and all the Pilenius, O God. Protect us with your mighty hand and bless us with your abundant blessings in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Mayayong puntags na tanan.
Good morning, everyone. Let us all stand to observe the, ah, Silisha. The entrance of the presiding officer for the, ah, for, ah, for the procession of the maes.
Hello. Good morning to each and everyone. The 63rd regular session is hereby called order. Kindly remain standing for the singing of the Philippine national anthem.
I am a vice mayor and my covenant with my people is to devote myself to public service. By divine providence and by the will of the people, I am a leader to preside over the local legislative. With that integrity and stewardship, I shall lead the local legislature and act measures and ordinances for the common good and fulfill my people's aspirations for happiness, peace, and prosperity. May the almighty God help me consecrate myself for the people I have called.
Thank you, please visit it. Requesting our madam secretary for the roll call.
Good morning and welcome to the 63rd regular session of the Sanggoyang Bayan of Ipe. Honorable Chair, present for this regular session are the honorable Ramses Troy Oligario, the honorable Seraphin Ramos, the honorable Parida Dangpalan, the honorable Edamel O Kapirig, and the honorable Alapin Muhammad. On record, honorable Chair, only five are present. We are not yet in quorum.
Considering that there are only five members being present as of the moment, the Chair would like to declare a 15-minute recess while waiting for the others to come.
Honorable Chair, I move for the adoption of the business of order for today.
There's a motion for the adoption of the order business. Any second that motion?
Second.
Julie Seganded by Honorable Dangpalan. Discussion, any amendments, objection? The motion is hereby approved. Mr. Floor Leader, may we proceed with the visitors hour?
Honorable Chair, I move for the suspension of the rules to accommodate our vis-
The rule suspended to accommodate our visitors for this morning.
Our first visitor, Honorable Chair, is in person of Danilo C. Delgado, a teacher from AMC Publación.
Mr. Floor, together with Mr. Delgado is the former SB member. Ma'am Eleanor Sarduan, ma'am, good morning.
Okay, ma'am. You, you have the floor. Please occupy the rest room.
I'm here to represent a dear friend and a neighbor of ours who came to see me over a matter that has involved his son in one of the schools over here. Um, I promised that I would bring this up before the SB so that there would be leverage for him to be able to call, to have the committee in charge of education, to be able to call for a committee hearing, a proper committee hearing, so that the persons involved would be gathered together. Ngama makaisturya sila, makaexpikar siya. Actually, Mr. Osotega is representing his son. It's the son who has, um, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Delgado. Anyway, ako na promise siya that he would be here, Mr. Honorable Chair, that he would have a chance. Ang iyang anak is here to be able to explain their concern over apparently a school ruling which they cannot quite understand. And I believe that committee in charge of education will properly call for a committee hearing whereby representatives from the school as well as the concerned instructor will be invited before they proceed to the CHED. Because when he first came to me, he was going to go straight to the CHED and put it before them. But I said, "Why don't we bring it before the SB?" So that a case like yours can be taken by the Sanggoyang Bayan and therefore this will allow an opportunity for this community to be able to, to look into, into cases like this. So this will not happen again. So that at least there can be a precedent that can be established by this honorable body. So ako nanghihag ang panahon to Mr. Delgado, og he will continue to share with the SB, with his body this morning, his concern. And his son is also here with a couple of his classmates. So I gi- I give the floor to him.
Thank you.
Dear Rosabian.
Mayong puntag sa, sa tanan nila binasa tuwang vice mayor, sa tuwang SB member, mayong puntag sa oban pa. Ako day si Danilo Singko Delgado, ah taga Puruknoña Aurora Publación Ipe, samang gasibugay. Na ako karundiri kay mga yun takug tabang or advices regarding sa ako ang anak ng may iskwila sa Imhai College nga, na anakabasi sa Bulwan. Ang ako ang anak, mi, ah, miskwila na dito sa Imhai, first year college, hangtun sa third year college. Unya, nagplano na siya, o mibalhin na siya sa laisyon sa Dr. Aurelio Medusa Memorial, ako ang colleges, maga-porter na. Then karun, ah, nagapply ang ako ang anak, og transkrip- Then karoon, nagapply ang ako ang anak o transcript o kuwan record gidawat na sa Imhay ang bayad atong July 14, pero wala pasilang asian na tagaan o transcript. So karoon ang ako ang anak temporary enrolled sa Dr. Aurelio Mendoza Memorial Collegeyes. Unya, ang ako ang gika hadlukan, kung mulamar na ang taga CHED o kondili ang Dr. Aurelio Mendoza nga mupasan na sila o ka pertinent kuwan na la papers, so sa una lang kung uli ka pasa ang ako ang anak at temporary enrolled namansiya. Ato ang ako ang anak dito sa Imhay kay di pabalik siya kay para ang transcript ma kinikuha, wala gehapon. Mi ato ko last mga, last month, di ina lang ko nga pabalikon. Mi ato ang ako ang asawa, di other week, wala gehapon. Ambot dili na ko makasabot kung ano nga dili, mi tagaan o transcript o record sa kuang anak nga unta. Nagabayad man mi, fully paid man mi. Dun ako ya dokumento nga fully paid na mi sa iskuilahan. So ang mga bata, isa na ang ako ang anak sa 28, ka estudyante nga mibalhin sa Dr. Aurelio Mendoza Memorial Collegeyes. So ang mga bata, kanang 28 kabuk, wala na tagaan o transcript o sa kuang paminaw kay isamandihan ang ako ang anak, maragnawad ang na o paglaom ang ako ang anak sa pagiskuila. Na discouraged na, dili na ganahan nga mo kini iskuila. Sa ato ang mga kinukuha hinumduman, di ba? Ang tabatan unan, maui pagasa sa tuwang lugar. So kung dili na to sila tagaan o maayong apagtagad, unsa una lang, unse ma kini hitabo. Ako, parents ko, naninkamot ko nga maka iskuila ang ako ang anak. Pero ngano nga, dili nila taga ang isaktong papel para makabalhin ang ako ang anak. Ngayon ta, dun namantay academic freedom. Ngano nga gi, ngagi deprive, ngano nga gi deprive man nila ang academic freedom sa isa kabata nga, gusto nga mabalhin o lain iskuilahan. Kada lang ta ang ako ang gustong pabot. Taga ang kayong salamat.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delgado for raising your concern.
Can I speak, Honorable Chair?
Okay, Honorable Chair.
Record for process, no? Kikan sa pag request niyo o transcript o record, anto karoon, pila na kadlang millabay?
Di, di, kikan sa pagrequest niyo, anto karoon, pila na kadlang millabay?
Kanas ako, Honorable, ang mga kinukuha hinumduman ako, mi bayad dito ang ako ang anak kay mi request siya o ka transcript atong July something, second week of kuwan July. Until now, wala pagiapon mi kadawa.
Thank you, Deputy B. Oll.
Mr. Chair. Okay, Honorable Sabiyo, the Committee Chair on Education.
Honorable Chair, I move that this matter be referred.
Before referring Mr. Floor, the Committee Chair on Education would like to ask something.
Magas lang. What if, um, say reason nila ngano, dili nila tagal tiyuan?
Honorable, ang pag-anto na ko kuwan dito, pag-ato sa kuang anak, pag-ato sa kuang asawa, mo ingon lang nga wala. Tapos, ang signature na lang sa tag iya, sa president sa kinukuwan CEO sa Imhay, ang kulang dito, ihan na lang signature, ngano nga, ngano nga, kinahanglan pa dyan nga naasia pakuhan namo. Pidiramontan na siguro pirmahan niya, pagkatapos siya pag-anto namo, makuha na namong kinukuwan transcript. Unsa dyan ang ginatago niya, ngano nga dili siya makatago, transcript sa ako ang anak.
Pila na ba kadi is, dili ang inyong trans... Magunin na bulan?
Last, last July 11, mi bayad o bayad sa transcript o record ang ako ang anak nga 500. Gidawat, niya asta karoon, wala pa na tagaan o transcript ang ako ang anak. Naadihan ang ako ang anak, pati ang iyang mga kuyog, kay daghan na sila nga kuwan. Na problem, ma anak.
Okay, sir, thank you. Okay, Mr. Floor Leader, any more queries, clarification coming from the body? Yes, Honorable Caperik, good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Honorable Chair.
So i-clear lang na ako, sir, no? So ang isa sa mga reason nga dili, marilis ang transcript of records kay wala pa kitirmahang president sa clearance.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Wala pod bagay instances na ay mga SAM, ay NC pa ang mga bata?
Nagpa-evaluate ang ako ang anak. So gitagahan sila, evaluation na kuwan, aboto sa itawagato, basta evaluation. Pagkatapos, mi bayad o ga transcript ang ako ang anak, kay mabalhin siya, ngano nga gidawat man nila ang bayad sa kuwan transcript, unili sila mo, atagong transcript sa kuwan anak.
So mo, o imo query karoon nganong dili sa because nagbayad 500 for the processing of transcript records, pero wala patakabaloon sa pay mga other reasons behind, ganong dili pod mapirmahan. So ikaduha akong pangutana, sir. Ang unse mga steps, ngayong gibuhat tungod kay pilak, from 2nd of July up to now. So ang inyong ginabuhat is, nibalik ka, mo anak una nagbayad 5 pesos, ikaduha ni balik ka, sir. Ikatulo ni balik imo wife. So ang inyuhang gibuhat pa lang, nagvisit pa lang dito, nagfollow-up. No written communication, no petition, no wala tanan. Then ang kaupat niyong lakang is karoon ni Adtumog SB for this issue. Sir Tama, okay, sir, thank you.
Okay, any more verification?
Ang ako lang kuwan, Honorable nga, once nga fully paid na ta, fully paid na ta sa tuwang obligasyon, pwede namatang siguro makabalhin siguro kung asa, ta gusto nga mo iskuila.
Okay, so, okay, ma'am, the, ma'am, Sardual would like to say something?
I just wanted to get more information, no? I checked with the boy and asked him if he had completed all his requirements, whether naaba siya mga, as the concern of one of the honorable members, nga si Honorable Chanti nga. Um, saba naaba'y mga incompletes, wala man da. And, I mean, the boy says that he's completed the requirements. So I think the concern is simply, the reason why they came to me was because they didn't know where to go. And they were going to go to CHED na onta, but I said, "Before you go to the CHED, that's going to be a big matter. Why don't we bring it to the committee so that a little more discreetly, the committee can check into this and can call for a committee hearing where the involved personnel, like Mrs. Ortega and her husband, I believe, that they could share, no? And so I think this will be better. Contain it before it becomes a big matter. But they are determined that if nothing is, if the committee, this SB committee cannot somehow facilitate for an answer or a way out of this, or I believe that the SB member, the SB committee can do this. You can call for a committee hearing involving the personnel and also the boy and then you can, I think you can have more information and I think it can be settled. Ang ilam ang good is, nagbayad na good sila. Wako sila ina, what's lacking? All they want is they want to transfer na because actually their neighbors, the school is nearer to them. Ang AAMC is just, just a walk away. They don't have to ride anymore. It's going to be more economical.
Okay.
So I think we can understand the practicality of their concern. So ang ako lang hangyo lang is, is, I pray that the committee in charge can look into this asap so that this can be resolved.
Okay, thank you. Well noted, ma'am. Ah, the Honorable Caperik.
Na lang takoy i-add, I suggest also, kung pwede like, siyempre refer naman siya sa Committee on Education, kung pwede magsulat, nang punta sila sa school. Kasi so far manggood, ang evidence lang na to karoon, nga gi refuse or wala munahatagan o transcript of record is only the receipt nga nagbayad mo for the transcript of records, but as to reason, wala pod sila lain evidence. Para lang nakuha, para mas maayub ha. Sulat mo last another sa Committee on Education nga hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Honorable Caperik, any more? Clarification, yes, Honorable Seraphine Ramos.
Ako na to, kung ang iskuilan, dunay mga polisiya. So na lang, na estudyante mo transfer, na agneser pamagin, sao mo sa i buhatong. Si mga dependents, na mo transfer, ang mukha ka estudyante anak, nga diman basa-basa kay morang. Patindigan ng na kuwan, transfer may guslan ang kabuk, mo siguro ang dipubun, sa, hi, nga dili maka transfer kay, kuwan ko na good. Ma, kuwan nilang, i-kanse ng iskuila, marijos. So I think, ang concern kuwan, gedikan na na na, mo o sesa dito, sa mga polisiya sa iskuila nga. May na makelaro na to, kay disut pangit pataba, na to dili. O sa kibalogun si mga polisiya sa iskuila. Kay kinalan, the SB should be punish capes, the, kani polisis, mga rules, revolution silang iskuila, para ma, ma, kibalogun sa. Thank you.
Okay, um, yes, ma'am, would you like to add something? Before we begin, I refer this matter to Committee on Education.
I don't mean to be nitpicking, no? Pero I believe that the reason they came to the SB, they came to see me because they wanted some help.
Yes.
Now, if you want them to do that, you're not helping them. I believe that the committee in charge of education can facilitate for a meeting whereby all this personnel could be called in and therefore you can even, you can have all the issues, the policies or whatever it is for the school. But I really believe that they have the right to question, ngano dili sila ka transfer. Now, at that time when they were there, when the father went there, the mother went there and then the boy went there, and I think he has a classmate, they could have explained to this family, ngano wala man pedili, pwede. They could have said, "Okay, here's our policy, dili, they pwede in one ini." So before they came to see me, monang ni anis lasa ko. And I promised them that I would bring it to here so that this body through the committee in charge can facilitate for a further discussion. So this will be a chance for this body to come up with policies concerning our schools. But that's not the only school we have. So you can, this is why we're elected into the SB, right?
Yes.
So that you can truly help the community. And I believe that you will be doing a lot of good if you can help this out and then make a policy, a principle that will allow other schools to be aware of what could be considered.
Okay.
So thank you very much for this and thank you for giving us assistance.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Honorable Chair, I move that this matter be referred to the Committee on Education.
For that, Mr. Chair, siguro, mas maayos siguro na para sa pamagili na to jurisdiction na may tungod sa issue sa mga iskuilhan, no? Mas siguro mas, pa sa papa, refer na to, refer na lang na to sila sa Depedur kaya sa CHED.
Okay, but, uh, siguro, in aid of legislation, an inquiry siguro?
Yes.
To be conducted by the committee? Okay. Okay, so any second to the motion, we refer this matter to the Committee on Education. Julie Seganded by Honorable Caperik. So this matter be, this matter be referred to the Committee on Education for further inquiry and in aid of legislation.
Honorable Chair, I'd hear the next visitor. Person of our very own municipal engineer Kulon Kulon and from the MPDC, Engineer Deputado Nimpah.
Engineer Kulon Kulon, you're now recognized. And our MPDO, Engineer Nimpah Deputado. Go ahead, engineer.
To our preceding officer, Honorable Vice Mayor Ramses Troy de Oligario, members of the Sanggunyang Bayan, OPIIL, visitors, good morning. May I, may I know, say, in order inquiries?
Yes.
For posteries, can it say update? Update for, and it say update.
Okay, there, we caperik.
Si Engineer Kulon Kulon, um, padayan lang ta siyang explain after the NHA. They promised na to be here kasi tungod, ah, na sa tong Ipil Fisherman Subdivision, tungod at tunggi pa, tungod at tunggi pa sa, you refers land use about the code of patities for the seleksyon, sa, sa patong mga awards, sa mga beneficiary's, sa tungod atong pag-expand na to sa tong port. So karoon, medyo daku-daku manggood ni siya nga issue, so kinahanglan, pareha ta karoon na kay ballo, um, sa ni status. So we requested the NHA, dapat NHA una before si Engineer Kulon Kulon.
Okay, go ahead.
Wala pa, dili sa siguro siya, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Engineer Kulon Kulon. Okay. Okay, dear Honorable Dian Catalunya, yes, ma'am? Yes, Honorable Catalunya?
Can we ask regarding other matters from Engineer Kulon Kulon?
Okay.
If it's okay? I just want to have updates regarding the Health Center.
Na naman siya?
Yes, that's why.
Okay.
Okay lang. And that's out of the topic, but if it's okay, you can give us the update regarding the Health Center considering that there was a PTC already, issue, I think two months ago.
Once again, good morning to this August body. The present status of our LGO Rural Health Unit is, the construction is ongoing and they prioritize, the contractor prioritize the work under, on the first floor. They, they consulted with Doctora Person on, on the partitions, on, or, they, what's this? They consulted and followed the plans and specifications for our Health Center. And yours truly is also monitoring closely to the work. So hopefully, the engineer Myargas promised if the ground floor of that Rural Health Unit will be, he is trying to fast-track the work that by, by, as much as possible by December, the ground floor will be utilized.
Can you give us a timeline in terms of completion of the whole project?
Um, the project duration of that, our issue is 150 days, so more or less that is five months. But we talked with Engineer Myargas, he's trying to lessen the number of days because they were building, the structures already with roof so they can have overtime if they, if the funds are available. But by now, he is processing his, his mobilization.
Okay, any more? That would be all? Okay.
Honorable Chair.
Dear Honorable Dankalan.
Engineer, in addition to Honorable Catalunya's inquiry, I just would like to ask if the allocated budget for the second phase project enough for the completion of the Rural Health Unit?
Firstly, the Phase One of that project is provided by funds from DPW's worth 9.5 million and the LGO funded for 7.5 for Phase Two. But the, in 2018, when that, that was planned and the detailed estimate for the completion of that project worth is, worth is 22 million. So the, that project will be operational, especially the ground floor for that Phase Two. So I have discussed with Doctora and Mayor the other day when we had the launch in Stonehill. They plan that they will go to Congressman Udela for the additional funding that will have, that will make the project fully operational. But anyway, for that Phase Two, the ground floor will be fully operational by the time it will be finished.
So engineer, mga pilapadod ang kinahanglan para ma fully completed na dudang ang tuwang Rural Health Unit?
That requires more or less mga 8 to 10 million.
Okay, thank you, engineer.
Okay, any more query?
That is for infrastructure alone, for all the infrastructure needs alone.
Precisely, your honor, because equipment will be another one under funds required.
Okay, any more queries, clarifications? Okay, anymore queries, verification, yes, dear old Ramos?
Pilabay, how much of the total estimated cost to the building, total, phase one, clubbing, pesto?
Um, in 2018, your honor, that cost 22 million, no? Because the, the one who prepared the detailed estimate for that project is DOH Region 9. So by now, they estimated at 28 or 30 like that because of the, considering the increase of price of materials.
So when the, uh, plan, a building plan, prepare, DOH may nagpaparano, um, mura, three years eh, wala na siguro. So, I, I think the, the estimate, the previous estimate is already outboarded. So there should be, eh, updating, updating the costing, uh, cost, costing the, kana sa second floor, the first floor, according to is 9.5 million, so completed in the pesto. So ang problema karoon ang pesto. So kabilin to, ang pesto, it cost mga pilapot, 30 million, updated cost.
Your honor, the pesto is, uh, through a loan from the LGO EPL that is 7.5.
Uh, 7.5?
Yes, your honor.
So making a total of 9.5 plus 7.5, mga 18 million?
Seventeen, your honor.
Tangan tangan. So, what, what will be the, kwan, kwan pesto? To start the construction to pesto?
Your honor, the, the construction of pesto is already ongoing because we have already secured permit to construct from the DOH last July.
So according to you, ang pesto ang complete na, that is, kublaan, that is, 9.5?
Yes, your honor.
Million. So complete na, wa, wa, isip na di, kano mga personnel sa atong health. Kano health, so na, na, wala pa namamabalan, so complete na. At eh, to dyan na, maslang mabalang, kaya naggrabe ka, saka biasa, department, bukod kutsor nga, iriya.
As I mentioned, your honor, phase one is, uh, constructed by the Region 9, DOH Region 9 through DPWH and completed according to their, uh, estimates, but for that whole structure, dili pa, kulang pa, your honor.
So nindut mo na unta. Kaysa pesto, dun na may timeframe to complete pesto, updated completion of the pesto, so mga personnel biasa kublaan, kublaan, balen na desu kwano. Transfer unta na. Wa, wa, was there a kwan, kaling, kaling official tunguber di, kana sa pesto, na tunguber na?
Um, your honor, I, I have no knowledge about that because that is between the DOH Region 9 and the DPWH matter.
Okay, so anymore, dear caperik?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, nasabda na ko ang ginaiingon ni engineer Kulon Kulon, di ba, ako kaitang problema before, nangita taog papel, kung kinsa sa DOH or DPWH, makahatag sa tong permit, kaya para unta makapadayon o construct. So nagpasalamat ko nga July, DIA, lago lang, nagawa sa'yo sa pilakatuig na to silang.
To be exact, your honor, uh, it cost, uh, it took us one year and seven months to secure that PTC.
Daghan ko to, SB resolution di re, mas kinaasa na ta nagbasa ato, at least naabot DIA na July. So karoon, monang ginaiingon nimo engineer, nasugdan napod siya padayon o construct because of the loan, na to karoon, katong.
Exactly, your honor.
Oh, muto 7.5.
Yes, your honor.
Ang ako apung nakita manggud ya mo, siguro nang wala pa naka-transfer yet totally ang uban sa health kasi di ba medyo huyang, gauyog siya, ang second floor.
Um, by now, your honor, after, uh, after installation of partitions and kwan, dili na man.
Ah, okay, so at least makapadayon na na siya. So, in so far, pila na like kinahanglan para mahimugin siya fully operational, ah, ang building lang, kaya operational, appeal naman ang equipment.
We have, uh, talked with architect Ramos the other day, um, the estimate is, uh, eight to 10 million and I also, um, I also discussed with Dr. Berzon and mayor, that, katong ni Agi, that they will be, they will lobby to Congresswoman Yudella for eight or 10 million and that, the, the feedback was positive.
Ah, okay, sige, engineer. Uh, Mr. Chair, pwede na ko ipadayon ng NHA na lang sa iha?
Okay, sige, go ahead.
Uh, since abot, nais naitabo, okay man, unta kagahapon, nga magmuanhi sila, pero karoon, dili na lang daw sila muanhi, total ang implementation man daw sa LGU. So engineer, tagain na lang mi, oh, uh, katong mga gepangstorya nimo sa office and all para na alam ko'y idea atong makauban dari sa legislative.
Good morning again. Um, our, the EPL Fisherman Subdivision, which is located at, uh, Buluan, the project is costing 10 million and, uh, funds from NHA, it was bided in, in the EPL back and uh, the scope of work is site development, no preparation sa katong lute, more or less, mura 300, 329 lots, um, by now, the contractor has, uh, um, worked, his accomplishment is almost a 50% but, uh, he, he has, uh, he billed less than, uh, maybe mga 30% lang yang nabill and, uh, on last May 26, 2023, I have received from officer in charge of, uh, Region 9 and farm attorney John Louis Ribulyos, it was, uh, it was sad to note that they have certification that, um, the project, EPL Fisherman Subdivision are not provided for the, in the board approved work program and corporate operating budget for 2023. Um, kwan na, kwan na, mura kita gaan lang tagnotice nga, wala na approve sa board ang katong project, so Louis, ang, ang, by the way, the contractor of that, uh, EPL Fisherman Subdivision is a stone throw construction. So Louis siya, advance iyan trabaho, dayon, ipagagaan na tagnot, notice from the region sa NHA nga, wala gi approve ang budget for 2023.
Project nagso-gudug 2019, engineer, no?
Yes, ma'am.
So good. Uh, based manggud to sa among committee meeting, nag-ingon manggud nga, uh, unique ang setup sa NHA, na kung dili mahuman sa karoon nga tuig, ang budget na unta na approve na for the full implementation of the said project will be returned back to the general fund, tama ba? Pero wala matilabot, di ba, sa NHA nga funding man?
Yes, ma'am, eh, I am not, uh, bali, di kay ko kuwan sa ilang guidelines. Uh, by now, uh, there are about 50 lots nga ready for this, for, kwan na, pwede ma-award, but, uh, di kay ko kakuan kung, kung say, kung sa po'y mga kuwan sa guidelines ni Ana, then, mura mabutang pod nga, unfair to katong, re, re, katong remaining nga mga recipients, kaya maguna ng uban, on ya. Uh, naalam po rin, Louis, nakakumply nga mga individual sa requirements, pero mauna nga, kwan, tangong ang project by now.
So baliwala pa gino man ang site development plan, so good for 50 palanggiya siya.
Exactly, your honor.
Pero pila unta tong gino project na to, engineer.
329 lots.
Muna pod siya ang katong, uh, naatanan nga maigo sa port expansion.
Yeah, because ang mga recipient ni Ana is katong affected sa proposed project sa Philippine Ports Authority, sa sitio palid, magdao.
Tapos engineer, nakapasa, naraba may resolution ng SBD re, interposing no objection for the expansion of the Port Authority. Ha, dayon karoon naabot na nga letter, nga wala na'y budget. So, pero I believe appeal man siguro pod na sa, uh, POA no, nga PO, POA na. Of course, ilap na sila'y project, naagid pod sila'y kabutangan sa mga tao maapektuhan sa project. Dapat, engineer no, pero baka itudlo namanggud pod sa LGU.
Kana lang, kana lang, kwan, gayon.
So review na lang gina mo padayon, Mr. Chair, ang kanina issue.
Okay, sige, thank you. Anymore?
Sir, um, duna lang ko'y query. Nganong nabilling ng project nga, wala man day puno?
It's because the project was bided during President Duterte's time and, um, the government has provided funds for that. But sad to note, when the new administration came, naabot lang sulat, wala pod, wala, putta kabaloo, kung say ilang, what is in their minds, your honor.
Yes, maybe the engineer could not properly answer that query, maybe sa NHA na ta na siya ma, ang makatubaga ng, uh, query. Okay, so anymore? Okay, thank you, engineer.
Thank you.
Next visitor, Mr. Flor, do we have anymore? Okay, engineer deputado, of same concern, ah, wala na.
Next in line here, honorable chair is Ramon I Araco. Mister, Rambezeran Village.
Mister Araco? Is he around? Mister Araco? Araco? Okay, wala, wala, Mr. Flor?
Okay.
Next?
The next is person of Roberto A Chong, designation from, from Muay Thai, characteristic for gold medalist.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chong is now recognized.
Hello, good morning. Uh, balik napokos sa atuangan ni Lieutenant, may buntak. Uh, I have here, uh, an official invitation coming from the national again. This is for the national championship to be held in Manila. In, uh, greetings through unity and sports, in line with the continuous momentum of Muay Thai grassroots program in our country. It is our pleasure to officially invite all Muay Thai Association of the Philippines, MAP affiliated, our clubs, gyms and chapters in your local government unit to participate in the 2023 Muay Thai National Championships together with certification programs, Muay Thai International Course and Referee Judge Seminar. The event is set to take place on November 13 to 19, 2023 at multipurpose arena, Hill Sports Complex, Pasig City. This is a pinnacle of Muay Thai sports in the country and will serve as a selection for the Muay Thai national training pool. Attach is a copy of the activities and programs of the said event. Best regards, General Lucas Malakilo Retired, President and Chairman, Muay Thai Association of the Philippines. Actually, uh, last Mindanao leg, we have our athletes and also together with it, uh, dunga ni sila pati ang Batang Pinoy. Uh, there, there are all qualified for the national championship to be held in Manila. And also I have a good news, uh, last also August 26 to September 2, Alkamor Sharif Kama, who won gold medal in kickboxing in ROTC held in San Buanga City, is also qualified for the national ROTC games to be held in Manila, in Tagaytay City. And also Angelie Musa, also a gold medal in kickboxing, who present EPL San Buanga Cibugay for the ROTC games in Manila, in Tagaytay, also, uh, from the nine RCDC, come from AMC. And also Musa is from STII, so they are also qualified for the national games championship also in ROTC. Uh, this is our, uh, this Vince Patagok will be present in Batang Pinoy, the 12 years old category, and and also Ray Alexander Chong will be, uh, 7 years old will present also for the Batang Pinoy. There will be 12 athletes to be invited and play and present silently, despite it. So hopefully you can help us our travel expenses also here, well, badly needed talaga. So also, I want to ask lang about this, uh, resolution come from, uh, 08-33-2023, a resolution commending the achievements of the Muay Thai team, if you for the, uh, preliminary performance during the Muay Thai Mindanao leg held at General Santo City. Uh, the actresses keep asking me, uh, when they can receive their, uh, incentives, said, said they wala pa manggud nila, dapat lang incentives daw.
This was the first of the body?
When an event? When is the event?
It will be held at November 13 to 19. I will leave na lang this one, the nation.
Okay, sige. Okay, uh, thank you. Next visitor, Mr. Flor Lidda. Thank you and congratulations and good luck.
Katalan, thank you kaayon, salamat.
Okay, congratulations and good luck. You have no more visitor, honorable chair?
No more? Okay, may we proceed, Mr. Flor Lidda, with the privilege R?
We are now on privilege R. Anybody among the members of this honorable chamber who wishes to avail of the privilege? Privilege R, please raise your hand. Honorable, boldang palan, you are recognized.
Good morning. Good morning to our presiding officer, to all my colleagues, visitors and all the staffs. Um, two weeks ago, I received a video na din na, di endorse na ako kay Satuang, kay Mister Buak from a concerned citizen and a resident of Huruk Tubigan Veterans Village. This is with regards to their problem on a neck deep nga plading diha sa ilahas sa Tubigan. Matod pa nila sa una kung magbaha, dire-diretso lang tubig kay mura free-flowing, pero pag sugod sa pagconstruct sa Gaysano, sa fencing. And then, uh, naginstall sila culvert nga gamay. Uh, sa sugod palang, nag-comment na sila nga kung pwede dakkan ang ibutang, either box culvert daw, nagdako. So wala dud, naminaw ang contractor sa Gaysano. So daghan na sila mga giduulan ang mga residente to include pati ang mga barangay officials. And ang barangay official nagpassa ug resolution, address di re sa LGU. And then, last week, one of a media na, uh, approach me and, uh, gusto ko niya interview. Bahay ang concerns sa, and the, uh, sa Tubigan. But I decline because nako, I am not the right person para ma-comment on that. Uh, since na, sila napasa na resolution, so, um, siguro, dili ako ang dapat nila interview. And besides, that was not even, um, addressed to the Sanggunyang Bayan. Or, um, can be bang, um, uh, refer to the Sanggunyang Bayan. So he refused the interview, so sa ka-REGISTRATION. So lahalang problema dud, nga kung mo ulan, muda dud ang tubig diha sa Huruk Tubigan because nga gamay ang exit. So wala dud na, uh, nag-serve ang corporal na dakko, kaya tag culvert diha na imo sa dona rest. Di ba, mo, lahus man dud na dito, sinay, so spread out ang tubig, moikos sa silver plading sa Tubigan. Ka, basta continuous rain, ka mubot na mga, uh, one to two hours, expect dud. one to two hours, expect dud taan. Ah, ako lang ane, gusto lang ako may pabot o para makabalupod ang mga taga Huruk Tubigan nga nakabalo tangtanan. Sa ilahang problema diha sa Veterans Village. So na din ha sa video, ang dissent nila na ako. Ang sound na na siya sound, baka pwedeng iano. Wala? Na manggud na iover koan, voice din ha. nga, ginengon nila unse reason nga nung ga-plading dud sa ilaha. So gamay na na siya na creek pero kung kusukay ulan, mura na siya nag-spread out ang tubig. Yes, say more on that, um. Yes. Ah, sa kilid sa Gaysano.
Okay.
Kilid sa Gaysano. So another one, um. We all know that October, October 1 to 7 annually is also was declared as the Elderly Week. So the elderly Filipino week is commemorated every October 1 to 7 by the proclamation number 47 issued by then-President Fidel Ramos last September 26, 1994. So ang Linggo ng Katandaang Pilipino highlighted the significant role of the elderly sector in nation building and in promoting the rights and welfare. Under memorandum circular number 34, LGUs are encouraged to support activities and programs for senior citizens during the annual celebration of the Linggo ng Katandaang Pilipino. So, ang pasalamat ka because supportive of the program for the least. And of course, naamanggud ang mga committee chairs, so person of Honorable Ramos. And last Monday, I've seen over the social media nga nagcommence ang atuang celebration of the elderly, of the elderly week. Ang LGU naangat ang present sa atuang chairman si Honorable Ramos and of course, preceded by our very active mayor, Honorable Anamel Oligario. So mauna nga ang, under RA, basig wala pa nakabalo ang mga kaubanato, no? Under RA 11350, the National Commission of Senior Citizens Act directed, the NCSC is directed to ensure the full implementation of laws, policies, and programs of the government pertaining to senior citizens. So, na na over 2.8 million senior citizen nakaregister sa National Commission on Senior Citizens by online registration system. So the NCSC is eyeing the registration of around 9 million senior citizen by December this year. So hopefully, I would be one of those nga ma-register with the NCSC comes December, insha Allah. So tomorrow, we will, we would also be observing the celebrating the World Teachers, Teachers Day. So annually manis siya, gina-celebrate October 5. So to all the teachers here in Ipil, Cibugay, and the Philippines, Happy Teachers' Month, Teachers' Day. And we truly appreciate the service, the your sacrifices for all these students in the Philippines and thank you, that is Honorable Chair.
Thank you, and next. Next one?
We're still on privilege hour. Any more member who wishes to avail of the privilege hour, please raise your hand? There's none, Honorable Chair, we are true.
Okay, so I'd like to avail of the privilege hour. Good morning to each and everyone. I'd just like to congratulate each and everyone to all the members of the Sanggunyang Bayan, Secretariat, and to all the staff as for being recognized as the most outstanding Sanggunyang Bayan in the entire region of San Buanga Peninsula. With a score of 88.5, so we qualified for the national local legislative award evaluation, which will be evaluated siguro next week. Documents were being submitted to the ILG9, so again, congratulations to each one. And there were observations, feedbacks that were raised. Katung sa ang pinaka-importante ang, for us to have a ah, there was, one of the criteria was katung ah, yeah, one of the recognitions, awards of the local Sanggunian and for the members. Ugo sapod is for us to have a perfect attendance of the regular session. So as I have observed, for this term 2022, 2025, okay lang tong maka-on official business, but atong hangiyo na matag members nga, in every session, atong iing i-require ang perfect attendance. Naarigita dery, around, no, Ipil. If kaya rin atong ma-attend session, so it is highly encouraged, no? nga, ma-attend ta sa atuang regular sessions, once a week, ramani. Atuang session, so atong hangiyo na matag usang, kumahimo, unaaritad dery. Makuha na to ang perfect attendance, matag session. So nakuna siyang points sa atuang, sa ilang evaluation. So mauna siyang, one of the observations, feedbacks nga atong and also during the conduct sa seminar, sa Quasai Judicial Functions, um, siguro if you could remember, most of us raised our hands, no? Eh, we um, gave our commitment to the ILG9 nga ma-attend tangtanan, but ang uban, wala lang gitpok ato for personal matters. So sa uban siguro nga wa-kaantong nga ni-raise atong han. Atulang po ipaabot nga medyo maka, murag naulaw ta dito gamay kay Giandaman tas ILG9. Hotel and accommodation, they prepared very good the resource persons, but sad to note nga gamay-gamay na tang nagpakita dito. Um, kana lang siguro, no? If we do give our commitment, atulang hangiyo nga, make sure, we make sure nga, matugita para di tama akoan kay Giandamgud sila. And they choose Ipil because we gave our commitment and then pwidi to nila ihatag sila 'yung lungsod, unta. So kana lang ako ang ihatag ng mga reminders. Again, congratulations sa matag usas, so ato palakpakan ang tanan. And we do hope na kukuha ring diya po nato ang next nga term na sa provincial, sa regional level, hopefully we do uh, we do hope and pray nga makuha na tong nung national nga award, no? National recognition as the best Sanggunian Bayan, the entire Philippines. So let's hope and pray nga makuha na tong, thank you and good morning.
Honorable Chair, we are through the privilege hour. I move, I move to dispense the reading of the previous, the previous session, Honorable Chair.
Second, Julie seconded by Nervosa Bion. Uh, discussion? Any amend, objection? There being another motion is hereby approved.
Honorable Chair, I also move for the approval, the minutes of the previous session.
There's a motion for the approval of the minutes, the previous session. Julie seconded again by Nervosa Bion, discussion? Any amendments, objection? There being another motion is hereby approved. Madam Secretary, for the reference of business?
For the reference of business, under other communications, we have pertinent papers of Mister Renato Gumonit Pitulán from Barangay Buluan requesting for a resolution endorsing his application to the PNP.
Okay, is he around? Mister Pitulán from Barangay Buluan? Na Asia? Okay, um, may we refer this matter, Mr. Flor? To committee on peace and order, considering that the applicant is not around?
Honorable Chair? I, I move that this be referred to the committee on peace and order.
You refer this matter to committee on peace and order?
Item B duly endorsed from the municipal mayor, the annual gender and development or GAD plan for calendar year 2024, requesting for appropriate action and approval.
What's the pressure of the body? What's the pressure of the body? Committee on women? Which committee would like to refer this matter? Appropriation?
Honorable Chair, I move that this be referred to committee on appropriation.
Refer this matter to committee on appropriations?
Item C, a communication from the municipal mayor requesting for a resolution for the establishment of primary care facility or super health center in Barangay Makilas intended for the delivery of health services to be operated daily on weekdays from 8 a.m. to 5 p.m. and to be maintained by the LGU Ipil.
Honorable Chair, I move that this be referred to committee on health.
You refer this matter to committee on health?
Item D duly endorsed from the municipal mayor, a copy of PAMOA to be entered into bayan between LGU Ipil and SWD Region 9 for the implementation of strategic health desk for information, education, livelihood, and other developmental interventions or shield project in, in the municipality of Ipil.
Okay, Mr. Flor leader, what's the pressure of the body?
Honorable Chair, I move that this be referred to committee on rules.
You refer this matter to committee on rules?
Under item E duly endorsed from the municipal mayor, a copy of PAMOA to be entered into bayan between LGU Ipil and NGCP for the implementation of the Pangkabuhayan Program, Sarisari Stores, Bigasan, and itinerary for the 40 beneficiaries through peso Ipil.
What's the pressure of the body?
Honorable Chair, I move that this be referred to committee on rules.
You refer this matter to committee on rules?
Under item F duly endorsed from the municipal mayor, the following MDC resolutions. Number 1, MDC Resolution Number 2, Series of 2023. A resolution endorsing the development projects under calendar year 2024 Development Plan amounting to 63,48,622.20 to the Sanggunyang Bayan for approval. Number 2, MDC Resolution Number 3, Series of 2023. A resolution endorsing the calendar year 2024 Annual Investment Program or AIP amounting to 445,629.50,000 to the Sanggunyang Bayan for approval.
What's the pressure of the body?
Honorable Chair, I move that this matter be referred to committee on appropriation.
You refer this matter to committee on appropriations?
We are now on committee report, Honorable Chair.
Mr. Flor leader, may we proceed with the committee reports?
Is there anybody among the members? Please raise your hand or Honorable Capirig, you have the floor?
Honorable Capirig, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I have six committee reports. Uh, under appropriation, committee report number 201. A resolution requesting the Sanggunyang Bayan for the approval of realignment of funds of LGM Fund 2023 from installation of water supply at evacuation center to rehab and maintenance of electrical wiring of emergency operations center amounting to 300,000 pesos. After deliberation, this committee hereby recommends for the said, for the approval of the said realignment. I move for the adoption of committee report number 201.
There's a motion for the adoption of the committee report. Julie seconded by Nervosa Muhammad. Discussion, any objection? Having another motion is hereby approved.
As a resolution for the approval of realignment of funds of LGM Fund 2023 installation of water supply at evac center 2, electrical wiring of emergency operations center, 300,000 pesos.
Here is a seconded motion. Again, Julie seconded by Nervosa Bion and Nervosa Muhammad, discussion? Any amendments, objection? Having another motion is hereby approved.
Committee report number 202, a resolution requesting the Sanggunyang Bayan for the approval of realignment of funds of LGM Fund 2023 from training on PDNA post-disaster needs assessment to basic incident command system amounting to 300,000 pesos. Uh, this committee hereby recommends for the approval of this said realignment. I move for adoption of committee report number 202.
Any seconded motion for the adoption of the committee report? Seconded by Nervosa Muhammad, discussion? Any objection? Having another motion is hereby approved.
I move for the approval of realignment of funds of LGM Fund from training to basic incident command system amounting to 300,000 pesos.
Seconded motion? Julie seconded by Nervosa Bion, discussion? Any objection? Hearing another motion is hereby approved.
Committee report number 203, resolution requesting the Sanggunyang Bayan for the approval of the 2024 Local Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Fund Investment Program of the Municipality of Ipil, San Buanga, Cibugay amounting to 21,41,452.50. Uh, after thorough deliberation and evaluation, this committee hereby recommends for the approval of the 2024 LGM Investment Program of the Municipality of Ipil. I move for the adoption of committee report number 203.
Okay, that's the move. And Julie seconded by Nervosa Muhammad, discussion? Objection? Hearing another motion is hereby approved.
Another resolution? Uh, for the approval of the 2024 Local Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Fund Investment Program of the Municipality of Ipil.
Seconded motion for the approval? Seconded by Nervosa Chong and Nervosa Muhammad. Discussion? Any amendments, objection? Hearing another motion is hereby approved.
Committee report number 204, request from the Mido for the creation of one new position, utility foreman salary grade 6 under Mido and slaughterhouse section for Mister Rico Baricuatro. The committee on appropriation to which was referred the above request, refer this to our local finance committee for review. The LFC committee approved that utility foreman salary grade 6 is fit and suitable position to be created under Mido and slaughterhouse. Therefore, this committee refer this request to committee on rules and ordinances for the creation of one new position, utility foreman salary grade 6 under Mido and slaughterhouse section. I move for the approval of committee report number 204.
There's a motion for the approval of the committee report? Julie seconded by Nervosa Bion, discussion? Objection? Hearing another motion is hereby approved.
Committee report number 205, Barangay Supplemental Budget Number 1 of 2023 of Barangay Timalang in the amount of 453,926.94. The committee hereby recommends for its approval. I therefore move for the adoption of committee report number 205.
There's a motion for the adoption of the committee report? Seconded by Nervosa Bion? Discussion? Any objection? Hearing another motion is hereby approved.
Resolution declaring operative in its entirety, the Barangay Supplemental Budget Number 1, 2023 of Barangay Timalang.
Okay, Julie seconded by Nervosa Chong, discussion? Any amendments, objection? Hearing another motion is hereby approved.
Last committee report, committee report number 206. Subject, Sanggunyang Kabataan Supplemental Budget Number 1, 2023 of Barangay Timalang. The committee hereby recommends for its approval. I move for the adoption of committee report number 206.
There's a motion for the adoption of the committee report? Any seconded motion for the adoption? Seconded by Nervosa Chong, discussion? Any objection? Hearing another motion is hereby approved.
Another resolution declaring operative in its entirety, the Sanggunyang Kabataan Supplemental Budget Number 1 of Barangay Timalang. the Sangguniang Kabataan Supplemental Budget Number 1 of Barangay Timalang.
Okay, Julie Seganded by Honorable Chong. Discussion? Any objection? Hearing of the motion is hereby approved. More? Okay, thank you, Honorable Capirig.
Is there any other committee report from this on? Please raise your hand.
Okay, I think there's none. May we proceed?
We're through, Honorable Chair.
Okay, we're through. So may we proceed with the period of other matters? With the privilege speech delivered by the Honorable Dangpalan with regards to the concern of the residents of Purukto Bigan, I'd like to inquire the Secretariat if there was a communication submitted by some concerned citizens coming from Purukto Bigan?
For info lang sir, kaya wala manaka address sa SB. Naka-address siya kay Yudela.
Ah, okay. So... So any actions or anything that the local government unit of Epeel could do could do with that certain problem of the residents of the... of Purukto Bigan, Barangay Patras village, naapatay mabuhat sa ilang concern? Considering it's a private developer, ang gehimo din na sa kuwan. But our residents are affected sa maong ilahang development nga gehimo din na.
Mr. Chair, baka pwede podnato siya ipasa sa Eldrim Council?
Okay.
Kasi so far as ka't magling, ka'nang mag-upill kong meeting ako magina silang gina... Ay, nagbrought up ko sa kuwan, mga naiyon ko nga naapatay, matawag nga line ka na ang drainage canal system for the entire Epeel. So baka pwede podnato siya...
Okay, so may we refer this matter to Committee on LDRRM? With the... Ang atong imong basis for the referral would be the privilege speech of the Honorable Dangpalan? Okay, may we refer that matter? The concern being raised by the Honorable Dangpalan to the Committee on LDRRM? Yes, Honorable Ramos.
I think the right committee to handle that is the committee on Infra.
Okay. Okay, sige. Maybe we refer that jointly to two committees? Committee on Infrastructure and a Committee on LDRRM. Kindly take note, Madam Secretary. Anyone concerned that like to raise? Other matters? More? I think there's none. Mr. Flor Leader?
Move for adjournment, Mr. Chair?
Okay, there's a motion for the adjournment of the... Ah, wait, wait. There's a concern. I'd like to give the... Considering that the existence of this Sangguniang Bayan is pila na katuig niya, uapatay ka ng logo, official logo of this Sangguniang Bayan. June Buak na siya i-craft nga logo, he'll be presenting it to the body if naapatay mga changes or mga gustong idugang sa maong logo. So June, kindly flash that to the... Our... Any para sa ato ang mga comments? Nara, ang ato ang logo, naka-flash. So na may comment, ikadungag or ipa-add, ipa-enhance? Okay, June, kindly explain, June, kung saan ang mga nakabutang din na. Okay, Mr. Flor Leader? Kindly move for the suspension of the rules to accommodate Mr. Buak to explain sa maong naka-map ng logo. Okay, rule suspended?
Good morning once again to our Vice Mayor and SB member. So kini siya nga logo, mausub begini siya. Kining sa tunga sa Republic of the Philippines, kining nga logo din. The other, ka'nang uban nga lungsod, usually ka'nang tulula ilang ginailisan, ka'nang sa tunga nga. Naibok, ka'nang gabel, o kining sa kilid. Aking gibutang is ka'nang book representing local government code, then gabel, kining sa inyong decision-making, o ka'nang libra, kining balance ang ano. Then kining na siya libs, tapos mga text, Sangguniang Bayan, Epeel. Dalawigan ang San Bongga Cibugay, maumaorap po siya sa kuwan sa LGU Epeel, then 1949 ang creation. So ma-enhance o mailistan pag ini-depende sa inyong gusto.
Okay, siguro balikan ata na siya next week kung na may ganahang i-add, enhance. So at least initial ni siya nga ipakita sa inyo, gusto pa i-add na to before we officially adopt, approve the official logo of the Sangguniang Bayan of Epeel. Okay? Yes? Bayan ng Epeel and then, yes, LGU Epeel has its official logo and maybe we could also have the official logo of the Sangguniang Bayan. Okay, sige. Next week, we'll expect some of your ideas for two mga additional kuwan to improve or enhance the logo being crafted by Mr. Buak. Okay? Anymore?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes. The Honorable Ramos and then the Honorable Catalunya. Okay. Sige, atong i-raise ng concerns ato ang engineering kay Igang, ang inyuhang office kay da't ang inyuhang air condition. So basig, under warranty pa na or on sa ba? Okay, sige. Ato na ang i-call ang attention sa ato ang municipal engineering. Nanatato si engineer kanina? Okay, anymore? Concern? Yes, Honorable Catalunya?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just to echo what we learned from the DILG. It was very enlightening. It was a very good program for all the Sangguniang Bayan. I think isa-sad sa ato ang erase would be katung IRP, ato ang good government. How should we go about in terms of our Quasay Judicial Function? So I think wala pa magitay IRP, but we do have our ordinance. But it may nasadsik and it needs to be amended. So maybe, yeah, we look at that also.
Yes. Okay, we will have that, to adopt that internal rules of procedures handling sa ato mga complaints with airing barangay officials. Anymore? So there was a motion being raised by Honorable Sabian for the adjournment of the 63rd regular session. Any second to the motion? Julie Seganded by Honorable Capirig. 63rd regular session is now adjourned.